To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming to our business discussion today. We'll get through as quickly as we can. First, we have minutes from 10:21.
I approve the minutes for October 21st.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye. She always been trouble? Yeah, she, I thought she had. Probably. We have payroll amount of two payrolls as usual, $297,536.58, and then the Union Hospital Security an amount of $1,188.64.
Make a motion, we approve payroll as presented.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
It's like school.
You were troubled then, aren't you?
Yeah. You're not gonna set me in a corner or anything like that.
Page is the fourth, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, then, up first, since he has come from Minneapolis, on my request to present this news to us, Mr. Napier, Nick Napier, from, oh, he's called Brown and Brown Insurance now, it's always been Sutton to me, but Nick has been our broker for our insurance for some time now, and we have been served well. How's Mr. Sutton today? Did you see him today?
Thank you, sir, I did. He's doing well. He sends his regards.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me, guys.
Thank you.
And ladies, appreciate it. We're gonna go through the renewal for 2025. I know you guys have a ton on your schedule, so we'll make it quick. Really happy with the results and how they turned out this year. So, if you guys don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and jump in. Any questions so far, or any outstanding questions you guys want to discuss?
Right ahead.
Okay, sounds good. The first page we see here is the results of our marketing for our renewal for next year. So, the first column here that you see that does not have the number on top, that is where we stand today currently. If you look on the top in blue, we have all of our blue is what we call our knowns. Those are our fixed costs that we are aware of, and we can actually budget for exactly. Below, in that orange color, are our variable costs, claims costs, and some of the things that fluctuate based on how our claims actually run during the plan year. So, we're gonna start on the top here. The first column that you guys see currently, our fixed cost for our insurance, that's to use the network and then have the reinsurance, is that $538,000. And then, towards the bottom, we get into the oranges, you can see our expected claims at about 1.2 million, which totals our annual expected cost of about 1.7 million. So, currently, as we stand here today, about 1.7 million in expected cost for 2024. Column one, our next column over, is the renewal that we have from Anthem and our current stop-loss carrier. So, when we head down and total up our blues, their offer is about a 12% increase in the fixed cost from 538 up to 603. And then, if we go down a little bit more, about a 10% reduction in claims is what they expect. So, about a $1.7 million overall cost in expected claims for next year, or about a 3% reduction, which is great. We did a full marketing of this, like we do every single year. We went to every stop-loss market that we had, and we really pressed them to try to get the best offer. So, column number two is Sun Life. As a stop-loss reinsurer, you can see a 6.6% increase in our fixed costs and a 4% reduction in our expected cost at the very bottom. Not our best offer. Number three is Valence, as our stop-loss insurer. They proposed a rate hold and a 9.8% increase in fixed costs, which is about a 4.8% increase in overall cost for next year. And then, column four is the best offer that we were able to get, and really happy with this offer, especially on how we've run in a historic context. So, when we take a look at column number four, on our fixed costs, you guys can see a 4.5% reduction in actual stop-loss insurance and continuing to utilize that exact same Anthem network and not making any substantial plan changes. So, 538,000 currently, and that would reduce to 513,000 for next year. And then, below that, you'll see a negative .4% in expected claims factor. So, when we head to the bottom, currently, we have about 1.76 million in expected cost for next year, and with this offer on the table from Evolution Risk Partners as our stop-loss insurer, we're able to reduce our expected cost by about 10%, or 1.58 million. Most importantly, reducing our fixed cost by that 4.5%. Because like our underwriters will say, the claims will be the claims at the end of the day. The question is, are we doing everything possible to reduce our fixed costs and keep that exact same risk on the table? So, as you guys are familiar with your risk, you guys pay the first $75,000 on every belly button, and then we pay stop-loss. So, if someone has a million-dollar claim, we still only pay 75,000, and we get the rest of that back. Is there anything that you want to share?
I was just gonna say, and the major difference between those fixed costs is just the cost of their reinsurance.
Correct, and utilizing the exact same Anthem network-
Yep.
-and then administering your claims. So, it's always important to say, when we're recommending a change in stop-loss carriers like we are now, it's not a member-facing benefit. So, new ID cards don't go out. Everything moves forward just like-
The plan is the same as the plan is.
The plan is the exact same as the plan is with the members.
It's Anthem, and then what we have, and it's gonna be Anthem.
National.
It's just the stop-loss company is different.
Correct. That's correct.
And that's, that's kinda, we don't see that.
Right.
I mean, it's there, but our employees don't see that.
Correct, that's an administrative benefit that we work on on the back end in the auditor's office.
The insurance part that they see, though, nothing's gonna change. They're still gonna have their same ID card, the same basic coverage that they've had.
Exact same, that's correct. We always say the value of having the self-funded contract where you're insuring the risk is every year we can go to the stop-loss market and get our best fixed cost offer without ever having to change the network and how people perceive and feel the benefits.
Right.
So, right now, you guys have Varus as your stop-loss insurer that we moved to last year, and they're a great carrier for us. They had that 30% max, but we really hammered the market, and we're able to get a much better offer on our fixed costs. And then, they're also insuring that aggregate cost at a lower amount, too, which protects the plan at the end of the day.
Correct.
So, essentially, we're recommending a move to number four on the stop-loss. Anthem and the plan designs stay the same as they are today.
Correct.
Any questions on that particular amount? One thing I would recommend, or that we'll take a look at, G towards the bottom, is the additional laser liability. Really important, we have no additional laser liability, which is a huge protection for you guys. And the contract that we're proposing has no new lasers at renewal. So, if you move to this carrier, we know for a fact that in 2026, they can't laser off any members or ask us to pay more for a certain member, and in worst-case scenario, that would be, you know, they would propose a 40% increase, and we'd go back to the market, hammer the market again, and find the best-
Do you understand what laser is?
Offer.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they understood what that laser was.
Yep.
And they'd say, well, this is what it's gonna cost them. But if you want to include these people with that disease, it's gonna cost this much more money.
Exactly, exactly. And we've got the protection of no lasers now, and we'll have that into the future. I would also say, this is one of our preferred stop-loss markets, so our cardiovascular center of excellence that we have in right now, and our orthopedic center of excellence would all maintain coverage, and nothing would change on that. And so, we're getting the protection of all those claims still accumulating towards that 75,000 for each member.
Okay. The only thing changing for us is who the stop-loss carriers is.
Correct, the only thing changing. But I will caveat that and say, right now, you guys have that $3,200 high deductible health plan. IRS mandates that moves to 33 for next year.
Okay.
So, although we're not proposing any changes at all, IRS mandates that goes from 3,200 to 3,300.
Right.
And that just maintains that absolute minimum to have a qualified high deductible plan in place.
Okay.
Okay? Over on the next page, this is the meat and potatoes of the numbers. So, if we look in the top left corner with those green numbers, you'll see we're currently funding at 1.68 million. That's what the county is placing into an account to fund these claims. When we look towards the bottom, the renewal from Anthem, if we would've kept our current stop-loss carrier, was that 1.7 million. So, that would've went up a little bit, about 1.4%. Moving over to that highlighted column, which is what we're recommending, our claims anticipated to be about 1.58 million. And most importantly, the reduction in the fixed cost. Any questions on that particular page?
So, it's gonna be about approximately 100,000 less.
Yep, that's correct. So, over on the next page is the rate analysis. In that first column, you'll see our annual 2024 rates. When you go down to that highlighted section, if we didn't do anything to the rates, we would anticipate that, right, exactly what you said, Mr. Column, essentially $94,000 less in claims for next year as this year. So, if we didn't change the funding at all, we would be running just a little bit below last year, if we ran at 100% of expected. And then, 2%, 3%, and 4% just gives you an idea of what that would do to the funding moving forward. From our perspective, nothing ever stays the exact same in price. I always like to say, the milk that we bought last year, the groceries you bought last year, a lot of those are made the exact same. The healthcare that we're getting next year, newer machines, higher quality, that tends to increase a little bit more, even though inflation and the stuff you're buying outside of healthcare, even the price goes up when nothing's really changing with that. But here, we've got improved healthcare every year, and that's kind of why we want to make sure we're continuing to increase the funding, even if that's, we always recommend, if that's 1% or 2%, that's great. If we feel like we've taken a pretty big increase the past couple of years, as we have, maybe this is a year to rate old. So, just sharing that information with you guys. Any questions on the funding page?
No.
So, ultimate recommendation is a change in the stop-loss carrier. Remain with Anthem, same network, same administrator, and all that information, with the slight change in that deductible for the IRS guidelines. Okay? Okay, another important thing, our dental renewal was pretty ugly this year, as you'll see on that next page. To stay with Delta, 11.5% increase for your members, and they're paying all that right now because it's a voluntary benefit. We went out to the market, we found a much better offer in Humana. You can see the other offers, the standard came in flat. Humana actually offered a 2.5% decrease in our rates. We did a network comparison, their network is actually a little bit stronger than Delta Dental as well. So, essentially, we think Humana would be a good opportunity to move, save people that are paying this full amount, a few bucks here or there, save them five, six bucks a month, eight dollars a month if they're on that family plan. I would also say, those of you that are familiar with dental, dental has a maximum benefit that it pays out. So, if you look in that calendar year maximum, anyone uses their dental lot is familiar with that $1,000 maximum. So, if you go over $1,000, they just bill you the rest, right? So, if you have a $2,000 implant or something done at 2,000, normally, your current insurance stops paying out of the 1,000, and you, as a member, have to pay that next 1,000. Humana actually has a really nice provision within their plan. If you get out of your maximum, they pay 70%, and you would pay, you pay 70%, they take a 30% discount. My point is, if you get stuck with that $1,000 bill, like you would now over, it actually gets reduced by $300, and you'd only be responsible for 700.
Okay.
So, really nice plan provision, one of the strongest that we have for our dental networks. So, recommend a change in the dental as well, based off the renewal. We really tried to get Delta Dental to come in at that 5% or 6%, but they were not willing to budge, so it's time to make a change, in my opinion.
Yep.
So, we would approve or request a change in Humana, and obviously, share and educate people on that for the open enrollment meetings that we're gonna do. Any questions on that? Okay, a couple more minutes, and I'll be out of your hair. Last thing I wanted to review, we have two awesome centers of excellence right now. You guys may be familiar with that or not, we educate people on it every year. We've got Orthopedic Center of Excellence with Hendrix Regional. Let's talk about that real quick. This is our savings analysis for what we had going on so far. So, we've had four people actually perform the surgery through Hendrix Regional. They pay zero towards their deductible, and they also get that slight shared savings check. So, members using this are not paying anything towards their deductible or out-of-pocket. It's a really great benefit for them. And then, on the other side, it helps our group plan save a lot of money, too, because it's a direct contract, right? You guys are directly contracted to pay 180% of Medicare reimbursement, and these exact same procedures are being done from 275 to 375 at Union and other regional hospitals, not to point them out, but just, that's the way it works. So, you guys have a really good rate. With the four surgeries that we've had, we've seen about $101,000 in estimated savings for this. We always see in our more, in the city, the estimated savings might be closer to 90 to 95. The closer we get out to the rural areas and only one or two hospital communities, it's even better. So, this 101,000 realistically is probably 110 to 120. But our conservative number is 101, just because we know that for a fact, that's what is helping save.
And that's not, that's just savings to the plan. The individuals save, they didn't have to pay their deductible, and they got a stipend check on top of that as well.
Exactly, yeah. We don't do any breakdown savings for the actual members, but each of those members save probably 1, 2, or 3,000.
Okay.
If not, they're full out-of-pocket for the year. We had six other members that went and were seen as recently as October 21st of this year. The reason we like to just bring up six other members, the goal is not to go in and do surgery. The goal is, when they get in there, they're evaluated. If it's appropriate, then it's done. If it's not appropriate, they're not gonna give somebody a knee replacement or a new ACL just because they think it's the right thing to do.
And to emphasize, nothing says they have to go here. They can go wherever they want to go to get that done.
Totally voluntary. So, the member retains the right, if they love their doctor, a union, not taking anything away from that.
So, Hendrick says you don't need surgery, but Ortho Wendy says you do, and you want it, then you go get it. You can still get that, it's just that there's, they say you don't necessarily need that.
Correct, correct. We're not limiting them in any capacity, it's fully voluntary. Any questions on the Hendrix Regional? I would like to, I'd like to see this closer, like seven to 10 surgeries for a group your size, because we've had it in for over a year and a half now, maybe two years. So, we'll make sure that it's included in the benefit guide, and then we'll educate people again when we do our open enrollment meetings. Susan and I are targeting Wednesday, December 4th, for open enrollment meetings. So, if that ends up working with everybody, I'll be out here on the 4th. Proactive MD will be joining me. We're gonna do our standard, we'll do the courthouse, we'll do the county jail, and then we'll do the highway department. And then, we'll probably, when we're at the highway, we can do a little extra for the ambulance, ambulatory team that's backing up everybody in that back facility there.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. One last thing before I let everybody, or before I give you guys back to everybody else. The cardiovascular center of excellence that we're, that we have our contract in place with, we have not had anybody take advantage of it, but I just wanted to leave this stuff in front of you, so we'll share it again. We are super excited about this. Money Magazine came out with their annual rankings across the entire country, and you guys have a direct contract with the number-two heart center in the entire country. I mean, that is honestly incredible. So, Ascension St. Vincent Cardiovascular, it was formerly known as the Indiana Heart Center. You guys have that direct contract at 190% of Medicare. These cardiovascular surgeries are going in the market in this area for like 350 to 450% of Medicare reimbursement levels. My whole point is, when we take advantage of these, or our people do, these are the kind of surgeries that save us 50, 75, $100,000 just in one or two surgeries, and people are getting care at the best, one of the best places in the entire country. So, I would, my dad had a quadruple bypass. They cut him open, top to bottom on his chest, cracked his rib plate open up in Chicago, not the hospital you guys have. This hospital, part of the reason they're number two, they no longer open your chest plate and then mesh you back together. Go in from the clavicle, come up from underneath your rib cage, and if you can imagine how much less risk of infection, how less sore you are, and how much quicker you can actually get back to working, if you want, a lot of us want to get back to working. It's incredible how much they've cut off the recuperation period, and how much they've cut down on infection rates when you're not sewing and meshing somebody's entire breastbone back together. I mean, can you imagine trying to-
No.
-just recover the soreness? My dad was like, it was terrible. It was terrible to watch. My point is, part of the reason they got there, the facilities are awesome, and they have a couple of procedures that very few, only UCLA and Johns Hopkins are doing stuff like this. So, we'll continue to share that with people, but it's one of those things, if somebody knows that they need cardiovascular care, we encourage them to take advantage of these programs, because they're gonna save that full out-of-pocket max.
Right.
So, somebody that's already financially struggling, already gonna have other things going on, they could save 5, 6,000 just by taking advantage of this program. And again, we make nothing on this. This is strictly for our public entities, because that's what we do. It's cities, counties, towns, schools. They wanted to partner with us to make sure that they're bringing a benefit.
For you, away, the stop rates, just for a minute. What percentage do the employees pay this year? We've been marching that a percent every year. We 84?
This year, we'll be going to 84, because last year, we were 83, 17.
Okay.
So, this year, it'll be 84, 16.
Okay. It's the other way around, isn't it? County pays a higher percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
County's 84, W6.
So, yeah.
So, on the rates, there'll be a percent added to the employees' rates, even if we were to choose a zero or flat rate. I just asked Nick to stay, because Nick's been, not as long as I've been around, but he's the expert, and I know nothing about the type that's been around a long time. I know enough that it's always unwise to take a zero, zero rate increase. Here's why. You may have enough fun, if you remember last year, we funded in Midcoing, we knew we were at risk for 130,000 bucks. We didn't have to meet that risk because we had a good year, so we were in pretty good shape, and we actually had money into our reserves. You could take a zero and spend those reserves. The problem is, if you're taking a zero rate increase, inflation is going on anyway, so you end up getting a double whammy. Let's say that you did not take a rate increase of any size, and there, inflation was 4%. And so, now, starting next year, right off the bat, you're behind 4% of what you should've been paying because you didn't take a zero. And then, if you're funding for the following year, then all of a sudden, in both years were 4%, all of a sudden, now you're gonna have to take an 8% increase just to stay even with inflation going forward. So, my recommendation is always that we take some bite of that. Do you agree with that philosophy?
Definitely, yes.
I just wanna make sure these guys are from somebody besides me. Doesn't have to be huge, but we have to take some nibble at that inflation rate, otherwise, we're gonna pay a double at a time we pay this year's plus next year's the next time we have to have a rate increase. So, just wanna make sure everybody understood, and JV understood where we were on that. So, JV's with the council, so they'll be hearing this from me at their next meeting as well. So, you guys have any questions on it?
No.
Excellent work. I think it, I think the plan worked well last year, I think the choices we made last year worked out well, and you guys have managed it very well for us. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. We cashed us some chips with Evolution to get that below current, because I know that was really where we needed to be, especially after a couple of tough years, not getting to where we wanted to on the market, so.
I understand.
I appreciate that. I'll be back out here on December 4th. If anybody wants to catch up, I'll be with Susan.
Okay.
And like I mentioned, Proactive MD will be jumping around all over the place, and-
Susan's brand-new, too, so just so she understands, which I know she does. We got in trouble with the other carriers before we finally got you guys on board with us, and we were with the other carriers that we had before. There was just a difficulty there, because the auditor had made some decisions, policy decision, which is beyond her purview to do. So, I just wanted to make sure that she understood, when we weren't giving you authority, whatever word you want to use to make some policy-changing decisions, it's not because of lack of trust or anything, that's just our obligation. So, what she had done, apparently, and that's not accusing anybody of anything, but the way that evolved, was that they had changed the deductible, whether it was embedded or not embedded. It was gonna be cheaper policy if they chose not to embed it, but now the employee has to pay it twice, because it comes out of your maximum out-of-pocket plus your deductible. We would never have made that choice, but that just, that choice was made for us, we never knew about, and that's what caused the difficulty with our previous carrier that we had. So, I just want everybody to understand that, and you, too, and I know you do already, that if ever comes any policy tweaking at all, we have to make that decision. So, I just wanted Susan to understand, because she's got a whole lot of stuff coming her direction all at once, so.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Last thing I'll say, I'm very proud to work for you guys, so thank you for supporting us, and please let me know if there's anything else we can do.
Quit cheating at golf. That's not a good thing. We're playing golf at the time of this summer, this guy, he's gotta be cheating, he's gotta be.
You gotta go, Jim, you need me for anything?
No, I don't, you got any questions for Nick or anything? You were okay with the exhaust stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
I read everything. There's opt-outs and things like that, and all of those build in, so if we're unhappy, we can get out.
Okay.
But it seems to be a limited market for who does that kind of thing.
Okay. If something else come up, I'll text you. If you got a chance to respond, fine, if not, we'll do it again.
I'll have my phone on me.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll work with Susan on the stop-loss changes, we'll do an implementation call with that new market-
Super.
And everything with Anthem will stay the same, then we'll move dental over to Humana, and help people save some money on that coverage.
And it's really important for us that she has an understanding, because a lot of times we'll ask, we'll ask the auditor question, but we don't have the answer to, and hopefully the auditor will, so she'll, she'll be an active participant in that.
Okay.
Whether she wants to, you're not, she'll be an active participant in that. Thanks, Nick. You don't have to stick around, but you're certainly welcome to, but I just wanted to get you on quick, so you can head back to Indy.
I'm glad I haven't had any surgery, but Ascension, St. Vincent, my car's-
It's awesome.
It's a great facility. I just wish more people would take, it's a long way to go, I understand, but I wish they'd take more advantage of it, because, as you can see, it's ranked really high.
Yeah, we've got big posters up in the different facilities, like the warehouse and the county jail, we've provided them with posters. So, if they're not up right now, they're gonna be going up again for open enrollment, so we'll try to keep it in front of people.
Maybe we need to figure, we'll talk about how maybe we can even bring that up more often during the year, just to remind people, or, I know we can't track, I suppose you can, of people who have gone, like for a knee checkup or something, someplace, if we could, if you could, or whoever has access to that information without violating anything, any HIPAA stuff, if we could notify them that, by the way, you had this option, too, that you could look at instead of something else.
Yeah, Susan's your designated privacy officer, and I'm HIPAA complaint, so her and I can share that information and do outreach where necessary.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay.
Most people, sure, you give it to them, and it doesn't mean anything, you know, it's like legally stuff, you just read it, and then you file it, and you forget, and the doctor says you need to go here and see about this surgery, but if we could say, well, I know you did that, so you might want to check over here if you got savings.
Yeah. Most thing about, most valuable thing about being with Proactive MD, they are very familiar with all of our centers of excellence, so when people go in there and they're identified for something, they'll share that with them, which is really important. And they're not biased, they're not trying to refer to a particular hospital system.
Yes, that's the tough part.
They want to know what you guys have available to your members, and they share that with the members.
Great, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick, appreciate it. Cindy Todd.
but I wish they'd take more advantage of it because, as you can see, it's ranked really high.
Yeah, we've got big posters up in the different facilities, like the warehouse and the county jail. We've provided them with posters. So if they're not up right now, they're going to be going up again for open enrollment. So we'll try to keep it in front of people.
Maybe we need to figure, we'll talk about how maybe we can even bring that up more often during the year just to remind people. Or I know we can't track, I suppose you can, of people who have gone like for a knee checkup or something someplace. If we could, if you could, or whoever has access to that information without violating anything, any HIPAA stuff, if we could notify them that by the way, you had this option too that you could look at instead of something else.
Yeah, Susan's your designated privacy officer and I'm HIPAA compliant. So her and I can share that information and do outreach where necessary.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. Most people, sure, you give it to them and it doesn't mean anything, you know? It's like legally stuff, you just read it and then you file it and you forget. And the doctor says you need to go here and see about this surgery. But if we could say, well, I know you did that, so you might want to check over here if you got savings.
Yeah. Most thing about, most valuable thing about being with Proactive MD, they are very familiar with all of our Centers of Excellence. So when people go in there and they're identified for something, they'll share that with them, which is really important. And they're not biased, they're not trying to refer to a particular hospital system.
Yes, that's the tough part.
They want to know what you guys have available to your members and they share that with the members.
Good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick, appreciate it. Cindy Todd.
Did we need to make a motion to their...
Oh, yeah.
To approve that?
Yeah, I guess we do.
He recommended it, but we better make the motion.
Yeah, it's pretty clear, it's an easy choice this time. So is that a motion or go with his recommendations?
Yes, and also to continue our 1% knockdown.
Okay.
But we got to go with what we...
So we want to go into rates yet, but we can. Why don't we approve the plan first, then let's talk about rates for a minute here, we want to do on that.
So I'll make the motion, we approve the...
Not yet. I got another thing.
Hang on a second, Cindy, give us a minute, I forgot.
Health plans and dental plan that is recommended by Brown Brown.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, now let's talk about rates. We know that the employees will have a 1% increase just because we're marching toward that 80/20. It's not wise to take a zero increase because inflation is going to be... But we also want to be reasonable. We want to save money where we can, if we can, but in this kind of thing, you're going to pay it at some point. If it's, if it's inflation, you're bad. It's not claims if it's inflation. So what are you comfortable with on recommending to the, to the council? Council would like it if they didn't have to pay you anymore, I understand that. JV understands that. But we know that inflation is going to be ongoing anyway. So do we, do we recommend a 2% or 3% increase?
They have to give us 2, 3, and 4 as, you know, as kind of the numbers, but...
Just so folks understand too, how expensive health insurance is and what a major part of our budget it is. A, you know what I mean here?
And Nick, on that rate increase that you showed, you showed the annual rate for like, say it's somebody's single, $10,300.
What are we actually funding for right now, 1%? I know what we're funding for the amount, but...
We were at, well, yeah, I don't know how you would answer that question. We chose a number halfway between maximum claims and, and expected claims. That was, that was midpoint. Just so you folks know, if you're wondering how expensive insurance, what insurance costs a county, so when we have a county employee, our goal would be that the county will pay 80% of that insurance cost, the employee will pay 20. Right now, we are at 84% and I guess the number we had.
84 and 16.
Yeah. And so that's going to go at 85 and 15 here. We're working our way instead of, instead of jumping to that 80/20. But the cost of the plan regards how that's split up. This year, a single plan costs, regardless of who pays for it, $10,300. A family plan costs the county for every employee, $33,200 for every employee, just so you know how expensive your health insurance is. So if you hired an employee for 20 bucks an hour, that's $40,000 a year. You think you're only paying $40,000 a year for the, for the employee, but you're actually paying $73,000 a year for that employee because you've got $33,000 worth of insurance on top of that. And that's not counting the other, other things as well. So that's the way you know how expensive it was, it is incredible. So what's your thoughts? We know, we know employees are going to have a 1% increase. If we went with a 2% increase...
10%, that would be, I'm reading this right, Nick. 2% increase for a single would be $200 a year, correct?
$200 increase, correct, and then you guys pick up...
And then the 1% that we're tacking on to get that, so I mean, it'd be a 3% altogether, but...
Well, on, on the employee though, it'd only be 74% of that $200.
They don't pick up that full 200.
Right.
If it's 200, you guys pick up 84% of that and they...
But that's for the year, right?
Correct.
So 100, let's just say $180 a year over 26 pays. We're talking less than $10 if we go with the two.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
And so, and like you said, we're, we're kind of trying to stay away from the future, but yet trying not to hurt the employee anymore than we have to as well. Because they're going to get the 1% plus the 2%. So it'd be a little more than $10 probably is what it'll end up being, but...
Having a surplus was really important last year because we took a lower rate, a lower midpoint rate, because we had the money in the savings to do that, to protect that from happening. So by getting a lower rate, and then we didn't need it even, so we were able to add to the surplus for that as well. So we were healthy all year long. There was no surprises at the end, no, no 10% increases or 8% increases as you're going forward.
I feel really good at 2%, like you guys were discussing, given that we took an extra percent last year, or an extra percent or two last year.
Right.
And we ran well, so.
We did.
I feel really good at 2, where normally we may think 3 or 4.
Okay. You okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
That's your, that's your...
So I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Dan, make the motion.
I'll make a motion, we make the increase at 2% and providing the council will go along with us.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Keeping in mind that's 2% increase, hopefully the entire funding now will be split up 86/14.
86/14.
84/16.
Oh, 84/16, the other way, the other way.
84/16 this year.
It's 84/16 now, it's going to be 83.17 next year, is that correct?
No, it's 83.17, it's going to be 82.18.
It will be 82.18.
82.18.
Good.
Final decision.
Only two more years of that, then we can quit adding that 1% all the time. So we'll get that done. Okay. All righty, Nick, appreciate you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, Cindy, now we're up, sorry. Didn't you think about the rate stuff?
I'm here for redevelopment commission and this for tonight. I have two things. First one, let's see what we've got listed first, is the TIF note resolution. So I think Susan gave everybody one of those in your packet. It's kind of a lengthy document here. This is, this is what the redevelopment commission has passed in their last meeting. This is in regards to any future notes that they would need to take on any debt with the old National Bank building once we get to move forward with that. This for you tonight is, as worded by Mr. Clutter, is for you to adopt this, although you're not signing anything tonight because we don't have any numbers, we don't have any notes, there's no obligation, but just understanding the direction.
Mr. Clutter is the attorney for the partnership and the...
Redevelopment Commission.
Redevelopment, yeah.
Yeah.
Partnership, wrong app.
Yeah, I know. So what the notes would...
You need a faster resolution?
Yeah, so you just need, it's worded as adopting, although you're not signing anything, unless a note is taken.
We're not issuing any debt, yes.
So we, do we add, do we add a number to it?
No, we don't know what the numbers are yet.
We're just saying it's okay in the future.
Yes.
Yes.
To enter into debt, if needed be, whatever that amount will be.
Correct, correct. This is just getting ahead of things. We, as you know, run into some, not on our part, but delays in getting the purchase completed.
There's a word for that, I can't grasp what that word is. Consensus, we're giving a consensus to the idea that we're doing that.
That would be perfect. And what the statement is, would be pledging future TIF revenues to pay any debt.
Yes.
So there would not be any bonds or anything like that.
You have had conversations with the attorney, Mr. Clutter. So what things do we need to put in our motion to approve tonight?
Just what Bruce had stated.
Okay. Is that a motion then, Bruce?
Yes, that's...
Want to say that again?
I just make a motion that we, first of all, what resolution are we on, Susan? Do you know what one?
Five.
Well, that's why I wasn't sure we can and we're good.
So that'll be on the next page for you, Bruce. The one on the front is actually redevelopment. If you open that at the top of the left, on the left, that'll be the commission.
That'll be our resolution number five. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number five, which again is a resolution that basically allows the county to enter into debt using TIF dollars in the future, should it be necessary.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. Okay, what else?
So the second thing you have, only has three pages. It is referred to as the Park County Town of Rockville Indiana Redevelopment Commission Spending Plan.
I only have one page.
I only have one page.
Okay, well, there's, the other two go along and I, I will, I have actually an extra copy of that. Let's pass around. So this is something that is new this year for redevelopment commissions that they are required to submit through...
Gateway.
The gateway, yep. So this is a proposed spending plan for 2025. And if you read the note at the bottom, it does indicate that this plan can be amended as needed, but we are required to at least present this to the commissioners and to the Town of Rockville related to TIF spending. So this plan shows that the line of $200,000 there with warrant expenses, that is the reimbursement to the Town of Rockville for the sewer project that we did on 41 North. So that's the anticipated spend for next year. The following line of 1.1 would be, again, repairs, construction, those types of things that will need to be done on the former bank building. And then professional expenses of 415. So those would be technical-type expenses for that. So that is the proposed plan with, again, projected TIF revenues coming in.
Do you just need an acknowledgement from us that we have seen this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the following two pages are basically those numbers broken out between the central and the west tip.
Okay. So I make the motion that we acknowledge receipt of the TIF annual spending plan between Park County and the Town of Rockville?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
That is it for me on redevelopment and then Beth.
Say your next again.
Yes, and Beth is up here with me.
Before you, before you go, we were talking about the sewer plan. The, I'll, I can do it later. I don't want you to have to stick around, but if you want to stick around for that, I can do it right now.
I have to go to the Rockville meeting, but I got 20 minutes.
Let me do this real quickly then. The, I've got it written here. Sure I do. All right, Westler's been requested to do another PER, Preliminary Engineering Report through the State Retired Revolving Fund and Rural Development. They're asking for another PER. It's probably something that they just need to have, make sure that they've covered all the possible, possible ways of doing this sewer project. So they've asked for one more. There's going to be cost to that, which of course was not part of the initial process. So my recommendation is that we use $25,000 of the, of our ARC funds to, to help fund. That's not all of the cost, actual cost would be about $70,000. But I am, I was recommending that we use $25,000 of ARC funds to help pay for that new PER so we keep the sewer project heading down the road. So that would be my motion, that we allot $25,000 of ARC funds to partnership Park County, no?
It'll go to Westler.
To go to Westler?
Yes.
Directly, okay, to help pay for the new PER as requested by the State Revolving Fund and redevelopment.
So where is the other $45,000 coming from?
That'd be a Cindy question.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually in arrears with Westler right now of about $75,000. The additional PER changes that they're asking for takes us up to about 90. So this will help pay for the changes to the PER. Westler is fine holding those arrears as we move forward with the regional project. So there, it's not like they're invoicing and we've got bad debt piling up or anything. They're, they're holding that until we can get the other funding secured.
Answer your question.
Yep.
Okay.
So you made the motion?
I made the motion.
And I'll second it.
Move second to supply Westler with $25,000 of ARC funds to help continue the operations for the PER. All in favor, say aye. All right, okay. Now, Beth.
Hi.
If you don't know, Beth Martin is in the Plan Commission now. She has...
I was here with, speaking most of this, I'm here.
Fill the spot that Cassie Whitmire had for so many years and she is doing an excellent job, so she's here for some of this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I was just here to visit with you regarding using some ARC money for a comprehensive master plan. There are zoning ordinances that need updated. We cannot move forward with funding for anything, federal funding or state funding for anything, until we have a comprehensive master plan in place.
We had approved, in consensus-wise, of funding a comprehensive plan. We had talked about our lesson was 17 years old or some such thing.
It's 2007.
But we've not approved any funding, only because we don't have numbers to approve. So we've already shown the willingness to do so, we just need numbers of what you need to have.
Right, and what I've done is contacted one engineering firm who does this sort of work and they have said between $55,000 to $65,000 is what it would take to pay for that. So, and she, they just recently did the one in Fountain County, I think two or three years ago. So I would imagine those numbers are pretty solid.
Okay.
So that's about what we'll be needing, is between $55,000 and $65,000 to pay for the comprehensive master plan.
Can you come up with a second estimate?
I will be more than glad, we, we could even, Cindy and I talked about it, we could even put out an RFQ or an RFP and get proposals for, from three firms if you'd like us to.
As I understand, we have till the end of the year to commit it.
Yes, we do.
So we would need, we'd need them for too long.
And we can put those numbers together before, I would think, the middle of November, interview firms that you would like to interview, put together a selection committee.
Okay. And even if you don't have exact numbers, if you have a real close ballpark number, we can prove up to a certain amount.
Okay, well, and what I'm saying, what I have heard from Bean Longest and Neff is the representative with whom I've spoken, and she said they just did it in Fountain County and there were, there were two public hearings involved in that whole process and it was $55,000.
Okay.
So that should give us a pretty good ballpark and Cindy and I can work together to put together an RFQ, RFP.
That'd be great.
And put together some numbers, solid numbers, put in front of you, hopefully before the second meeting of next month.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be good for, for me to have.
Of this month or...
Yes, second meeting of this month.
Okay.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I misspoke, yes.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay. That's all I need then.
Thank you.
Bye.
Just for everybody else, that's a couple of times we've talked about ARC money. ARC money is American Rescue Plan money that the federal government gave to states and then we got, got money at one point, I think, was our number 3.2? Whatever our number was. And that money was to do these types of things with, as a result of the COVID years and the income shortfalls. Now we have been informed that the rules have changed yet again and that money needs to be committed by the end of the year, although Bruce and Susan have been to a meeting, they're going to explain more of that coming up here. So that's why we are talking about ARC funding now as we go along, because we have to have the money committed. If the money is not committed, some contractually, some just committal, then whatever has not been committed or spent at the end of the year, whatever left of that 3.2 million, if we had half a million dollars left uncommitted, the federal government would take that half a million back. the, the federal government would take that half a million back, so it's very important that we get that committed and, and obligated before the end of the year. Okay, we'll come back to that after a while here then. Okay, Exoft, we have a service agreement here from Exoft.
We do, and it is for the new financial software and the cash book to the treasurer's office.
For everybody, this is an example of ARP money being funded. We went, we, we changed software here last, no, last couple of years, last year I guess. Um, none of our offices could speak to each other, everything had to be entered and re-entered and changed, and so now we're all on the same page. That was a cost of about 400,000 or so, was that original? And then another part of this would be, this, this final part, and it's about 134,000. So that also is what that ARP money is being, being used for, is for the expenses of making the county operable. Nick has looked at this, and he says he's fine with it.
Anything else you want to throw out?
No.
It's broken down over five years, I'd say, 26, 8. And Exoft is the company that has the other part of what we're doing, so this is using the same company to integrate it, and, uh, they are a reputable company. I see them a lot and work with them, uh, a lot. So I guess with that, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Exoft to, uh, put in the, uh, financial, uh, uh, cash book, uh, part of, of their program. And I'll second that.
And that's at a cost of 134,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And American Legal?
This is what Leanna worked on, um, it was for the codification of the ordinances. They can also do, um, digitizing the minutes that you guys had requested. And this is just a proposal.
What this is referring to is we have no way, um, for anyone to search in our, our codes for our ordinances, uh, no way to search the minutes. Um, so now with the technology being what techno, technology is, that opportunity exists for all of this stuff to get entered into, um, digital stat, status, and, uh, anybody in the county, anybody anywhere actually can, can search minutes, can search ordinances, search anything they need to search. And so that's what this company does, is enter all that.
Do you know whether, did Nick look at all of any of this stuff?
It was sent to him, so we.
I questioned before he left, and he said he had looked over. I asked him.
I thought that was the, I thought that was the Exoft.
I thought it was.
I assumed he meant.
This too?
I assumed that's what he meant. This, of course.
There's no rush on this, we can wait until we make sure you've done.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, Dan, you had mentioned with, uh, with that just a minute ago, maybe to get another quote, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about this company, uh, if you look at some of their clients around us, they got Putnam County, Vermont County, Clay County. I mean, they've got counties around us, Crawfordsville, Brazil.
They were, they were recommended by Clutter.
Yeah, so, um, I'm sure that they're, they're a good company, but just from the, from the, again, from the taxpayer standpoint, make sure that we are paying a price that's reasonable.
Okay.
Okay.
And the cost is 10,000.
Another, yeah, it didn't look like it was too much.
No, I thought it was okay. I can't, I can't imagine entering all of it, all of it. Somebody's got to enter all of this, everything, yes.
Do whatever, try to find it, but maybe we could get another quote from somebody that's in this business.
Uh, we have a court claim.
And the court claim's already been sent to Nick and to, um, George Smith.
Okay. Do we have any out-of-cycle checks?
Oh, yes, we do. We have five.
Okay.
We have Park County CVC, end keeper's tax, 33,167, 13 cents. Harmon Contracting, it's the second payment for the sheriff's department drainage. Um, a new company governmental inter-insurance exchange, it's a court claim, attorney fees, 3,036, and that was verified with George Smith. RT Insurance, it's for Cybers, Cybers, he already, 13,725. And then also RT Insurance, it's a policy change, added to location, 636.
So I make a motion to approve the out-of-cycle checks, as presented by the auditor.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, let me see what business I have here. I had a request from Auderman Church to do the nativity scene on the courthouse once again, so I make the motion, will you approve that?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, courthouse doors, um, I had Don talk with the guy who did the outside doors, uh, already. This is to do the inside doors now, just the one side, because the inside of the inside doors is the real dark walnut. These would match the, um, outside doors, and I've got a cost here for you. Find that texture that I've got. All right, and with the same person that did it last time, Nick Brown, from, um, Brown's, um, Re-Vintage, and the total cost for all eight doors would be between 6,400 and 7,200 dollars. That's, um, $800 a door. That's completed refinishing, taking all that stuff off all there now, and then refinishing it. And Don will take care of the, getting them there and rehanging them.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion, is that we approve the, the, um, contract with Brown's Re-Vintage for, uh, refinishing the inside doors of the courthouse.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then. Did we have a, an agreement to approve for Matt Steckley? Did he send you a new, um, invoice for, for payment?
That was the Harmon, the Harmon Contracting for 10,000.
Okay, you should have had one for him as well, from the, um, on the copper, on copper project, doing their RFPs for other copper.
Only thing he sent today was the Harmon.
And it was actually 15,000, and they're just going to hold five back, because they're not going to be able to seat it. Sure, until it's spring.
Yeah, because he, we had that discussion before, he was wanting, uh, uh, part of it upfront, which is, we couldn't do that, but then he changed that structure into what he'd actually done as far as getting the requests for the copper project, the highway roof project, remember, he came and reported on that as well? And he had a, a cost associated with that, but let me, let me see if I got the email real quick, see if I got a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay, here's the revised agreement. And, uh, oh, he's waiting for us to approve it before he gets the invoice to you, that's why you haven't received it. That's the only agreement for both projects, 2025 and 2026 won't require justice for what he's done. And, uh, let me pull it up here. And he's breaking that down to, um, three phases, three years. That whole project's going to be about a million dollars only, something. Copper plumbing replacement, Roy called another county just to make sure the copper wasn't necessary. And it is, that's what, that has been copper, so that's what the cost. So, phase one, 2024 is 28,000. So, um. Yeah, this is the contract for him, so I guess we need to, we just need to approve these services agreements. For the copper piping and plumbing project in the service office over the three phases, 20, this is his, uh, his work. 2024 will be 28,000, phase two be 20,000, and 2026 will be 20,000. And then the total for the highway garage, if we, if we go that way, will be his portion. 5,500 dollars. So I made the motion that we, uh, approve. When the invoice arrives from, uh, core facilities, should be an amount of 34,500 dollars. So that's my motion.
That will be, what we've announced, that stepping on the 20, 2024 project and for the garage.
Yes, sure, yes. That's all in fair chat. Okay, so he should be sending that to you, I'll let him know if we approve that. All right. Jason, got anything for us?
Uh, a couple things. Deputy Ed Carter retired Friday, November 1st.
I remember Eddie from back in the Bullonure days, how many years was Eddie on the circle on that?
Uh, he has 27 total years. First go around, he had around 12, 14, and then went through the annual commission, and came back for the last two years to help us out.
Mike might make, make note in the minutes, if you don't mind, that the commissioners think Eddie Carter for 25 years in the service.
Absolutely. And then we hired, uh, two new officers. One has 10 years' experience. The other one has four years' experience, Brandon Mahady has 10 years, Samuel Schweitzer has four years at the local police department. So they've got Captain Caddy, obviously, so that saves a lot of downtime.
Are you pulling your staff now?
Yes.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Julie?
Um, I give you guys my monthly report, it's only two months old.
Okay.
Got a little bit busy there between September and October. Uh, call volume, pretty average, really. Well, average for our new call volume, um, over the last three years. Our revenues have gone up substantially, which is a great thing. Everything else has been running pretty smooth, fully staffed.
Are we self-sufficient here?
Well, yeah, we would have just hit it.
I would, I thought it would be this year. Every, every county is marveled at the fact that our ambulance service is self-sufficient. They just can't believe that's the way it is, well, that's the way it is.
Well, there's a few things at play in that, like, um, the commissioner and the council working together to do the lit tax, so that helped tremendously, and then our revenues going up. But our workload not necessarily getting worse, it's just the call stuff then, uh, higher Q than normal, so.
Do you think anything from us?
The SOPs, so I sent those out to everybody, Nick did look through them. He, he had one concern, and that was that I mistyped Vigo in one of the lines, because he didn't understand we work under Vigo County protocols. So our medical director and our supervising hospital are out of union hospitals, so we fall under Vigo County's, uh, protocols for advanced life services. So, um, or advanced life support, so yes, it's, it's supposed to be Vigo County protocols. That's the only thing that he sent to me, so I usually just have you guys acknowledge them and approve, and then, um, they would become effective January 1st, 25.
Any more questions? Your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept and approve the standard operating procedures.
All in fair chat?
Aye.
Okay, next, Julie.
Um, if you guys noticed, I did put some for Vermont County stats on the report too, just so that you could kind of look. Really, the biggest thing is the very bottom box on the far right-hand side. We're about 40,000 dollars ahead right now of what we've spent for them, so we're taking in 40,000 dollars more than what we've spent, I'm keeping a really close eye on that, obviously, end of year. So, so far, it's working out beautifully.
Great. Okay, you got, guy next to you, have anything for us?
Don't ask him.
Okay. Anything you need from us, since you're here?
Youth and Government Day, December 12th.
Okay.
I sent out emails to request participants, if any of the I think I got that from Allen. Office holders have not gotten, uh, with me, have them get with me.
All right, Chris is not here. Okay, um, Tony and Bob Edstendman?
That would be us.
Okay, what you got?
Um, we are both lifelong residents of Bridgeton. Uh, we live about a block and a half from the bridge. And on the last Sunday of the Bridge Festival, my mother had a heart attack. She had a heart attack, she died on my front porch. She's okay, but she died on my front porch. She, by the time all the emergency stuff got to the crowd, it was way too much time, way too crazy. They revived her in the ambulance, and we thought, because of the time she was in the ambulance, being worked on, that the barriers at the other end of the street could have been moved, to get us straight out of town.
Okay.
And they, and they, I don't know if there was miscommunication, I don't know what happened. But to get my mom out of town, the ambulance had to go to George Street, to Clark Street, then back to Allen Street, then back to Serin Street, back to Bowman Street, to Kirk Street, and then to Webster Street, and then back to Bridgeton Road, to get her out. We needed her out, a lot faster than that.
Give me that list of rooms.
Uh, okay, we went to George Street, Clark Street, because the ambulance had to go behind us. To Allen Street, to Serin Street, to Bowman Street, to Kirk Street, to Webster Street, and then back to Bridgeton Road.
We need to figure out a more direct move out of town.
But we should have been able to take her straight out. We were told, now whether, I don't know what happened, but we were told the barriers at the end of the street, at the, on the main street, would and could be moved in an emergency like that. And they were not.
Okay. Good to know.
And it was, now, I'm emotional about it, because it was my mother. And, um, even when we got to where they're, they have the policeman that blocks to let the Bridgeton residents in out. I don't know what happened there, I don't know what happened with communication, but we had the lights going, the sirens were going, and we even had to stop for him to start that vehicle up and move it.
Well, we need to figure out how to do that, yep.
Because he should have heard the lights and the siren coming up.
Should have been on second radio frequency.
Yeah, I don't know what that frequency was.
It's a little bit different, so our transporting ambulances have to stay on EMS. Their vehicle has to stay on dispatch, and then the people that are, um, working the grounds are on the event channel.
Why don't you do it?
There was a malfunction with that vehicle that day.
Okay.
I had issues getting into Bridgeton, coming from the south end because of that vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, every year, we say we're going, you know, we'll, we'll meet and evaluate what we've heard that happened, didn't happen. We'll talk with the sheriff, we'll talk with Julie, his EMS, Dan and I are kind of part of the committee. We'll listen to residents, uh, and, and we just, we just need to, as you said, we just need to look it over and see what happened and maybe why and how it can be corrected.
Yeah, because if my woman had died because the time we took out to get out of Bridgeton, that would have been bad, because we should have been able to go straight down Main Street. And I'm here to tell you that the people on Allen Street, where we had to go out, that's a food court area in a total way, and there's all food court, food stands around that line. They were 10 deep, because we went through there between 1:00 and 1:30, and those people would not move. They didn't want to get out of line, and Mr. Revived it, their tender line. I mean, we.
That's always going to be an issue, right, with the people, and we can take care of that barricade thing, we figured out a way to get that thing.
But they would not, I mean, the ambulance was blaring, and, I mean, they wouldn't, they, like, what, 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 you know, you're not supposed to be here.
Is your mom okay?
She's doing very well. She's in the hospital for five days, and she came home, she's doing very well.
I, I will say this, and I know doctors, and Julie can correct me on this, but I am so proud of what our ambulance service can do, even though it did take longer to get to the hospital. There are so many things our, our, uh, paramedics can do now, that, I don't know that a few minutes more would make a difference. Of course it could, I'm not saying it didn't, but I just want you to know that they were in good hands from the moment they got there, they are excellent, so.
Now.
Sorry you had that frustration to deal with, that had to be really frustrating.
It was very emotional, and as far as the ambulance and the paramedics and the people that were doing the women,
We'll figure that out.
They did a fabulous job, and it was getting out.
And we can figure out the easier way with the barricades. Now, now you don't have to build the, build this big blockade to keep people out, just have, just have a blockade that can be moved, it has to be, and that's just how it is. We can work that out. I'm glad, I'm sorry it happened, I'm glad you brought to our attention, rather than just dealing with it and stressing over it. Glad you came to us and told us what happened, we did work on that.
And I'd also like to request, um, you also have us residents coming in on Allen Street, going in and out on Rattle Street with our Bridgeton pass. Allen Street is horrible. Like I said, there's a main food court to the left of it, and there's all food on the side.
Well, I know they're going to meet, that's what they need to hear, is there a better way to do it?
And then, so they're 10 deep, and when I come in from work, and I get off work and come in around 2:30, they stand in the lines, they won't move, I have my flashlight on, and I show them my little Bridgeton pass, and they just, excuse me, they flip me off, you're not supposed to be here, this is not. So I would like to request us to be able to come in on Bowman Street, where there aren't any, any trucks for food and all that, you know? Yes, we'll have that little S down there on Main Street, but I'd rather deal.
Two blocks to go south.
Yeah, I would rather deal with the main street traffic, the people with the food and being in line, so I would like to request.
That's something I hear, that's a good, good point. They'll, they'll consider all of that stuff.
I would appreciate that.
Try to find the best way to get that, and we all know the value of having streets blocked compared to what it was, but it's got to be a good way to do that.
But Bowman would be saving for all of us, even the angels, I mean, they can just go right straight to their driveway from Bowman, and we would just have a little bit to go to ours.
Thanks. Would you like mom to look at?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We do need to look at those, but we had several issues this year with the concrete barricades.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Specifically at Buena Vista, for some reason, um, the one on Buena Vista. We got called, we get called to that intersection a lot.
Okay, good to know. Well, we need a way to move, make them move a barricade, however you have to lock or whatever.
If there are barricades or something.
You know, you have to do something, somebody, because somebody just want to move and go, you know, that's going to happen, so find a way to, way to.
People are, like she was saying, and I, I can't imagine in a personal vehicle, because, you know, we're in an ambulance with a siren on, and we are getting flipped off. The police that hurt us are getting flipped off, and, um, they're very rude about it, so they absolutely would do this barricade.
Amazing. And we had that discussion before we ever did the streets, because MSB trying to go down the street, people just. to go down the street, and people just would not move. You've got an ambulance with sirens and lights going, they're just not going to get out of the way.
I've watched them, they look up and go right now.
Is there any way that, you know, they've got that siren down there in town, that's the people, you know, something like that would happen?
They kick it on.
It's on.
They kick it on every time they get called out.
Every time.
That's not a problem, yep.
But the people, the people don't know what the siren means, like in the brochures.
Okay, Chester, what, you're up for the Bridge Festival, what you got?
Oh, I got, the way it worked at my end of town was great, because if they shut that street off past the school, traffic would have been backed up to Roseville. What, my problem is, is at the other end of town, on Serin Street, the one they close off, okay, every street in town is either eighteen to twenty feet, and a couple sixteen. When they read that to town, they did that at eleven feet, the rideaway's thirty feet. If they had a way to maintain, I mean, the vendors, the reason the vendors are where they're at on them streets is because that's where the county marks it off, but then they don't allow any footage for the people that's standing in the road, you know? Here's where they can turn from, and no one has any control over standing way out the road.
And what he's saying is, they set up on the blue line.
Right, yes.
And they opened their tent up, and I've even talked to several of them about Buckings Road there, and won't mention any names, there's a woman, she keep moving her, she got one of them boutiques, her flimsy clothing out the road, since the road's closed to traffic, she thinks no ambulance or parking.
Yeah, well, those are good points, and those are good.
We'll get together.
Those are for that summer meeting.
Yeah, because if, if, a lot of people don't come to the festival just for the festival, they come to see the bridges, the older people, and there's no way, unless they backtrack down School Road, or go down Bridgeton Road, out to Roseville Road, to backtrack to get to Mansfield, I mean, they're locked in once they get one into town, unless they move around, and they may move around, and there's no parking at the other end of town, like by the bridge.
Okay.
And my other thing is, I've mentioned to Dan, these parking lots, I park twenty cars. I provide a toilet for my customers, and these other parking lots don't have any facility for these people, none. And they need, they need to have something like, if you park fifteen hundred cars, you have this minute. Just because they got one on their lot, and they keep it locked for themselves, the customers, you know, the people that come deserve at least a place to use to bathe.
I agree with that.
I have a whole list of things, and that's on there, we're going to get together and have a meeting and get it figured out.
And when I signed up for this, I also put down there, I was going to ask you, we've discussed my alley, we're waiting on the fence. Now, I'm willing to sign a hundred-year lease just to have the use of my property, until I can get married together and sell it. I'm getting ready to sell one in town, because in the middle of the alley, to use it is a big tree. If we're going to declare it an alley and not ever close it, maybe they can move the tree, and I can drive to the creek. There's a big tree there. Ain't that right, Dan?
Yeah, I think, I haven't looked at the survey stakes for the alley, but I think it's on the edge of the alley.
You know, I was given thirty days, I did what I was told, I hired an attorney, and now, it's been, what, five, six months, and I come to ask about the alley again. And another question, when is the summer meeting for this, the bridge thing? Are you going to have people, like I said, somebody told me they had one last year, well, I'm a landowner down there, I was never notified, I like to have a little input, because I'm as worried as you are about the safety of the people. You know, I don't know how many of these people with these fancy dodged charges come up Webster Street, and I'm ready to tell them.
We haven't, we haven't set a date yet, we've got to get all this year and this stuff behind us, and then Bruce and I are going to set a date, and we'll try to get everything.
Yeah, I mean, I think the landowners...
Well, that'd be a place where everybody will get notified, appreciate it. Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything to the public, yes?
Have you guys made the decision on Moody yet?
Where you made go there, right now? Okay. Anybody else have anything to discuss?
I would like to make, I want to make sure, especially for the ambulance, I think I said it, but my mind is spinning, I have no problem with the paramedic, the ambulance drivers, or any of that, it was just getting out of town. You hear your department treated us wonderfully.
That's nice, nice to know. Nice to know. And I had to be just as frustrated as possible that you'd been moving this guy.
And when did your mom enter?
Yeah, well, I'm thankfully there. Okay, the, I, the commissioners had an executive session a while ago, and we finished the investigation on the, on the situation with the Park County Highway Superintendent, and I would make the motion that we, let me check one thing first. Nope. I would make the motion that we terminate the relationship with Moody as a highway superintendent as of the end of today.
I'll second that.
Any questions?
Of course.
All in favor, say aye. I have a statement that I want to make regarding that. The Park County Board Commissioners met an executive session to discuss the facts discovered during the investigation into the arrest of the Park County Highway Superintendent with Moody. As a result of that discussion, the Board Commissioner has determined that it would be in the best interest of both parties to end their professional relationship. This does not in any way reflect our belief in his guilt or his innocence. Park County will now be in search for a new county highway superintendent, and that's all I have to say about that. Your motion due during?
My motion due during.
All in favor, say aye. Let's go, folks.